Okay, good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the Colonial City Council Meeting. It is 6:07, we'll reconvene to open session. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you, sir. Alex, do you have any report out on closed session?
Mayor, no, there was no reportable action.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any conflict of interest declarations for tonight, council? Seeing none. Any changes or deletions to the agenda, David?
No changes to the agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to public comments. Any person wishing to speak on the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. I'll start with my audience here. I see a gentleman. Please state your name for me.
My name is Richard Green.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, my name is Richard Green, G-R-E-N-E. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, city staff, and Cloverdale High School liaison, and fellow citizens. After many sleepless nights and a nagging feeling that we've not yet perfected the city's agreement with the Rotary for its peace project, I've been doing some more thinking and research. If you can believe it, I now actually lean more positively toward it. I've warmed to the premise of the plan for Googling, after Googling images of other Rotary International Peace Installations around the world and learning more of the Rotary's admirable scholarship program. I will share some of these observations. To begin with, most of the installations are actually not flagpoles, but rather more like totem poles, creches made of local stone, or artful memorials on ground level. A magnificent example of that is the Rotary Club of Northern Guam of all places. Their ability to combine the Rotary's peace message with the 9/11 Never Forget Memorial in such a tasteful manner has gone far to assuage my concern that we could never meet eye to eye on combining such cognitively dissonant themes. As I looked at the small number of pictures of installations in the U.S. that include single flagpoles, however, I could not find one single image with the Rotary peace flag at the top. Regardless of the number of poles and flags involved, all the installations seem to regard the flag code with due respect, flying the living symbol of the United States in the appropriate position. I would like the city to reopen discussions with Rotary, to make it clear that the flag code requires that the only flag that should fly at the top of the Rotary's single pole is the Stars and Stripes. I think that you will agree this provides optics much more in sync with what we all desire: a good night's sleep, kindness, inclusion, and peace. Thank you.
Mr. Green? You had 52 seconds left, I believe. Mr. Mayor, are you still? Anyone else in the audience who want to make a public comment? Please come forward and state your name.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor Lance, City Council members, and everybody up there, good evening. I'm here, I don't know if I'm at the right place, but I've tried multiple times to address concern that I have with regards to my neighbor building something illegally next to me. I first brought this to the attention of Mayor, City Manager Kelly and Mayor Lance back in July of last year, and there was somebody out there and who red-tagged the illegal building. However, I have reached out multiple times to Mr. Thompson, who Mr. Kelly put me in contact with and who's been involved in our emails multiple times. And I've been promised that somebody would go out there, been up there multiple times to address the situation because it hasn't been addressed. Like I said, I don't know if I'm at the right place, but if I can get some guidance about how to get this done and, you know, so I can have some peace when I go to sleep, I would appreciate it. But nobody has contacted me, nobody has called me to give me any updates like I was Since then, my neighbor continues to build, add to the addition of what they're doing. So it's sensitive to me because there is a creek that goes behind our property line, and their building is literally sitting right at the edge, and we're talking about 15-foot drop, and it's right next to my foundation. And I want to make sure my kids and I sleep at night without having to worry about, because I know the laws and the regulations and the fishing game regulations. And I've been patiently waiting to have this or have somebody come out there, but I can't wait no more. So, thank you.
So I'll make a quick comment on this one. Mr. Duarte, what I'll do is I will email you the full contact of our code enforcement officer, who is the person that goes on-site, and I'll get that sent to you either through me or through Kevin. Okay? And if there's any more problems, let us know. Anyone else in the audience have any public comments? Seeing none, anyone in the virtual world?
Mayor Lance, no one's raising their hand at this time.
Anyone in the virtual audience wants to make a public comment, please raise your hand. There's no phone numbers on there at this point. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move forward to communications. Council may discuss at this time any written communications sent to council members since the last council meeting. Written communications to be discussed will be listed below if any. Does anybody have any? Perfect. All right, we're moving on to proclamations. First proclamation is the Week of the Young Child. Is there anyone that would like to read this proclamation?
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale recognizing April 1 through 7, 2023 as Week of the Young Child in Cloverdale. Whereas the Child Care Planning Council of Sonoma County and other local organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 1 through 7, 2023. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early care and education opportunities that provide a foundation of learning for all children in Cloverdale, California. And whereas high-quality early care and education can help ameliorate the effects of poverty, detect, and remediate delays, identify and help prevent child neglect, and lead to positive outcomes for individual children, helping them be better prepared for school and more likely to succeed in life. And whereas young children need developmentally appropriate, accessible, and available early care and education settings. And whereas young children need access to an early childhood education workforce that reflects a rich diversity of linguistic, racial, and cultural identities. And whereas childcare providers, especially women of color, who are skilled and valuable frontline professionals that risk their health to provide early care and education during a global pandemic deserve to be fairly compensated. And whereas early childhood education providers and other community members who make a difference in the lives of young children in Cloverdale deserves thanks and recognition. And therefore, be resolved, the City of Cloverdale does hereby proclaim April 1 through 7, 2023, the Week of the Young Child in the City of Cloverdale, and commits to investments that stabilize, sustain, and support childcare and early learning, so this essential workforce can continue to support children, families, and our economy through the pandemic crisis, recovery, and beyond. Dated April 12, 2023. So ordered. Mayor Lance.
Thank you, council member. Any comments from anyone?
Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to note that the proclamation was brought forward by, or requested by the Child Care Planning Council of Sonoma County. With your permission, we'll forward a copy of the proclamation to Susie Merrill, who contacted us at the Sonoma County Office of Education and provided him with a copy of the proclamation.
Great, thank you. Okay, D2 is a proclamation for Dispatchers Week. I was hoping we had Lieutenant Parker coming tonight, but I guess not. Anyone want to read this?
Mayor, I'm happy to read the proclamation.
Okay.
I wanted to mention that our chief was, as well as Lieutenant Parker, were both at the REMH Chief's Conference today and were unable to attend, but I know they really wanted to recognize the great work that our dispatch team, as the proclamation references telecommunicators. So with that said, this is a proclamation declaring April 9 through April 15, 2023 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that requires police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the preservation of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the City of Cloverdale Emergency Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities, by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the City of Cloverdale have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas dispatchers have exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during their job performance in the past year. Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Cloverdale declares the week of April 9 through April 15, 2023, to be National Public Safety Telecommuners Week in the City of Cloverdale, and further extends our appreciation to our dispatchers, including Tammy Lindley, Michael Newhall, Carolyn Peterson, Lori Smith, Darlene Stratton, Dispatch Supervisor Caitlin Jensen, and Records Manager Linda Webb, whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and our citizens safe. So ordered today. Mayor Tubman.
Thank you, David.
And for Joe Miller.
Any comments?
Just a quick comment, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I think all my comments hopefully will be brief tonight because I don't have much voice, but I'm so thankful for the city manager to read that out and read the names of our capable dispatchers and the whole team, because, you know, behind that telephone call are a group of caring, experienced individuals, and we really do, the whole community and the council owe them our gratitude, and so thanks for including their individual names and their recognition. And I wish someone from the dispatchers were here, but I know they're hard at work right now, so please pass on our heartfelt thanks.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I just kind of want to piggyback on Councilmember Bagby's comments that, you know, a lot of our dispatchers have been with us many years, and it just shows the dedication to that hectic job that they have, and we really do appreciate the work that they do for our city. So with that being said, thank you for your service.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to D3, Proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Councilmember Morganstern, would you like to read?
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale recognizing April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Cloverdale. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has a profound and lasting impact on every community member of Sonoma County. And whereas Verity Sonoma County's Rape Crisis Trauma and Healing Center worked with over 1,200 survivors in Sonoma County in 2022. And whereas national research indicates that one in five women will be raped at some point in their lifetime, and nearly half of all women will experience some form of sexual violence. And whereas one in 17 men will be raped at some point in their lifetime, and one in five men will experience some form of sexual violence. And whereas young people are at greater risk of sexual violence, and youth aged 12 to 17 are two and a half times more likely to be raped, sexually assaulted, or sexually abused than their adult counterparts. And whereas disabled people, people of color, queer people, homeless people, transgender people, undocumented people, youth in foster care, and people of other marginalized identities are even more likely to be victimized by sexual violence. And whereas over 18,000 members of the military and over 80,000 people who are incarcerated experience sexual violence every year. And whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing sexual violence in the City of Cloverdale through increased education, awareness, and community involvement. And whereas the City of Cloverdale strongly supports the efforts of Verity and encourages every resident to actively engage in public and private efforts to end sexual violence, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors of all backgrounds connect with crucial counseling and other support services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Therefore, be it resolved, the City of Cloverdale reaffirms its commitment to address the issues of rape and sexual violence by remembering victims, believing and supporting survivors, holding perpetrators accountable for their actions, and challenging societal myths and behaviors that perpetuate sexual violence in our community. And be it further resolved that, along with the United States government and State of California, the City of Cloverdale designates the month of April 2023 to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Thank you. Any comments? Seeing none? Do you want to make a comment? Ma'am?
He's going to be the one accepting the proclamation.
Oh, perfect. So could you introduce, because I don't have that on my list?
Go ahead.
Please. I apologize for not knowing that there was someone coming. I'm looking around, I'm like, I see you on your chair, and I'm like, man, she wants to talk.
I think this is the time for me to get up. Good evening, City Council members. Thank you so much for the proclamation. My name is Lisa Diaz-McQuade, and I am Verity's Lead Human Trafficking Caseworker, and I'm here to represent Verity this evening. So we just want to say thank you very much on behalf of all of Team Verity. We are honored that Cloverdale recognizes April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This work is so important, and we couldn't do it without the support of all of you. We hope you'll join us this month for our various events and outreach efforts. As a reminder, Verity has a 24/7 crisis line, where survivors and their families can connect with trained crisis line counselors and get the support and resources needed. Thank you so much again for this proclamation and our partnership with the City of Cloverdale.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have a picture? Can we take a picture?
Pictures!
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Have a great rest of your year. Right, sorry. My fries are in the car.
Good evening, everyone, and today for my report is that April 7 was scheduled as a makeup day for students for the snow day back in February. Students did not have school on Monday as it was an unused emergency day. Seniors are continuously encouraged to apply to scholarships as there are many due this month and next month. Juniors began state testing on April 4 and 11, and will have another test scheduled for this Friday. Key Club began a new key club year and welcomed new officers and rewarded their only senior and past president, being me, with a stole, cord, tassel, medal, and a lawn sign for all of my hard work and participating in the club for the past four years. Yesterday, Interact Club...
Yeah.
Thank you. Yesterday, Interact Club packed bags with essentials for the homeless, and senior trip permissions slip deadline is April 13, which is tomorrow. Cap and gown orders were also due March 20. Senior night for track was today at 3:30. Congratulations to Adis Nirgudi and Annabelle Schwartz. Track team so far is having a very successful season and has doubled in size with a team of 47 athletes. Last week's meet resulted in Cloverdale taking first place in 25 of 42 events across all three divisions. Varsity boys are ranked first in the league for the 4x400-meter relay and shot put, and varsity girls are also ranked first for the 4x400-meter relay and long jump and triple jump. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Quick question?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just curious, you mentioned the senior trip.
Mm-hmm.
Where is the senior trip to? I didn't catch it.
The senior trip this year is to Santa Cruz.
Okay.
Santa Cruz.
Santa Cruz. So you guys have a good time there.
How does it feel to be a senior getting right down to the end here? Talking caps and gowns and lawn signs.
It's definitely like feeling a bit real, like at first, like honest, it was like a bittersweet kind of feeling, but then it's just like actually like kicking in now. It's just like, I don't know, like it's just like trying to cherish these like last like month and a half.
It's going to go fast. Please go, yeah.
What are your plans for next fall?
I'm actually attending UC Davis in the fall.
Great. Congratulations.
They told you you don't have to have a bike.
Yeah. They told me I'm not allowed to have a car, so I'm having a bike. Yeah. In case y'all are wondering when I'm majoring in, I'm majoring in mathematics.
Very nice. That's difficult.
Yeah.
And what do you want to be? What's your goal?
The goal is to be like a math professor, like kind of that like level.
Great. Exciting. Okay. Move on. Moving on to E, Consent Calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Does anyone want to pull any of our five consent calendar items?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the consent calendar.
Okay. We have a motion?
I'll second Mr. Mayor.
And a second.
Comments on the consent calendar from the public? I don't know. I'm hearing very well, so I didn't, oh, I heard that.
No, if there's, if no one pulled anything, we don't have to.
And no one, no one...
Nope.
Okay.
So we'll move on. We have a first and a second, and we'll call when you're ready, Michael.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Apologies, with the new setup, I can't see you, so I have memory.
Good job.
Then calendar passes five times.
All right, we'll move right into new business. G1, Presentation and Acceptance of the Fiscal Year 2122, City of Cloverdale Audited Financial Statements. David, is that you? Or Susie?
Mayor, I'm going to turn this over to our Finance Director, Susie Holmes. She's going to introduce the representatives from Cropper Accountancy, and we'll walk you through a presentation. So with that said, Susie?
Yeah, thank you. So tonight, we have joining with us John Cropper. He is the lead and the owner of the company that prepared our financial statements. This is the third year that we have worked with Cropper. He's going to go through and kind of do a high-level summary of the audit. But just so you know, the auditor's report or the financial statements include an independent auditor's report, a management discussion analysis, which is completely done by city staff, and then the government-wide financial statements, which are audited by John Cropper and his staff, required supplemental information, and additional supplementary information. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John. He's going to kind of walk through the highlights of the audit, and then at the end, I will, I have a couple more closing statements when he's done.
Thank you, Susie.
Great. Okay, so can you hear and see me? Okay, well, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, Honorable Mayor Lance and council members. As the mayor knows and council member Bagby know, we met last Monday night and as a finance committee and discussed these items that we're going to go over here shortly. I'm here really for the council. So any questions? I'm here for you, Susie is here for you, and with that, I have a couple, I have a couple slides that hopefully you can see over here on my PowerPoint. So we'll just kind of start with the audit results, and the council pays the auditor, the independent auditor, to really do one thing, and that's issue the audit opinion. So on page one, if you have the audited financial statements, you'll see our opinion. Susie mentioned the audit opinion, the management discussion analysis, and the notes as well as the financial statements. I will say that MDMA is very helpful because it's got some comparative information year to year, and it is put together by staff. So for somebody wanting to kind of, it's not as much of a numbers person that wants to kind of know what's going on, that's a great place to be at the kind of the beginning of your financial, your audited financial statements. You can see that we have mentioned as audit results on the first, the first bullet point, the unmodified audit opinion. It used to be called an unqualified opinion, that was a little bit confusing. Unmodified is a good thing. It means we haven't had to qualify the opinion anyway. The auditor goes through and looks at the financial statements, a trial balance, goes down through the balance sheet, looks at the internal controls if they're helpful. We do not audit the internal controls, we use the internal controls that exist. So when you see the second bullet point, page 79, you'll see there's a report there, but you do not have an audit opinion per se there. It's more about compliance, and if we did use internal controls and found something that we thought we could help the city with, it might end up in that report or a management letter. There's no management letter, which is a good thing this year. You can see at the end of the communications letter, this has, this third bullet point, this has 114 letter, that's written directly to the council, because you're charged with governance, and at the end of that, you'll see some... And at the end of that, you'll see some journal entries. There's no material journal entries. The auditors put two journal entries in there. One's a reclass, not deemed to be a big deal, and the other one has to do with the pension 68, which is always something that we go over with staff and make sure that we get right. The other entries really are client accommodation entries to help them give us the most accurate trial balance that we can audit. Inside, and I think I probably will do this, I will show you this letter. I'm going to drag it over. Hopefully, it's in your packet. Let's see if I can drag it correctly. So this is the SaaS 114 letter. You'll see it's got a lot of templaty kind of language, but the indents here, yes, please.
We're not able to, we're not able to see the letter. I think you'll have to share that as an independent screen.
Okay. When I dragged it over, it didn't come, huh? Okay.
Right. I think if you might have been sharing the presentation instead of a screen, we won't be able to see it.
Okay. Let me try and do this. I'll reshare. I'll stop sharing, and then I'll reshare. New share here. Are you able to see the screen now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I see a PDF that says page 1 of 4.
Okay. So if you see that Cropper Accountancy letter had this letter written to the council, it's pretty templaty in terms of a lot of the things that are said, but you'll see when we get to the indents here, it says the most sensitive estimates affecting the city's financial statements were, and then it goes on to talk a little bit about GASB 68 and 75 because we get that valuation from the actuaries through the state. We kind of look at all those assumptions and make sure that your deferred inflows and outflows, your pension liability are in sync. But those things are largely dependent on interest rates and some of the assumptions that you'll see in note 13. Same thing with 75. There's an actuary report there, and when we get into this, you can look on the statement of net position and see those individual numbers. You'll see that it makes up almost $10 million between the post-employment benefits and the pension, which will become important as we will see that there's a little bit of a negative on the government-wide financial statements. Then you've got, of course, depreciation expense. Now, all depends on how long you're depreciating your assets over. It's kind of a guess, as well as these most sensitive disclosures, which we include the cash investments, the pension, the OPEB, and then we had a small prior period adjustment related to the prior year. I think it was around $39,000. So I am going to stop sharing that, and I'm going to reshare because I'm learning that that's kind of the best way to do it here. I'm going to reshare screen one. All right. Are we back on audit results? Does everybody see that?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Okay, super. And thanks for guiding me. All right. So we kind of covered the audit results there. On the next screen, we've got noteworthy items, and these you can see if you went to not the PDF, but the actual page of the audited financials, the statement of net position is on page 15. The way this statement of net position, what does it mean? You've got two balance sheets essentially. You've got the statement of net position. It's full accrual, everything. It includes all your debt, all your fixed assets, your pension, all that, all the economic ability that the city has. Whereas when we go to the fund basis financials, the balance sheet does not have that. That's more on a current economic basis. So here we are. You know, if you were floating debt, this is something that your bond council would want to look at. You can see we've got the assets at about 119 million. The liability is around 16 and a half million. You take that, assets minus the liability, you end up with a net position. It's kind of assets minus liabilities, what's left. And you'll see that you don't have really, it's broken out on that page 15, not $99 million. You have an unrestricted net position that's kind of negative. That's kind of the checkbook number of a negative unrestricted, right? You've got other things that you've invested in, a lot of capital assets of almost 94, and legally restricted amounts of about seven. But if you look at the, you know, I mentioned to you that your pension is around $10 million. So you know, over time, this number will turn, and it certainly has turned when we get to your fund basis or your current economic situation. And so here, the second bullet is the general fund. It's page 19. There is budget in the back of your financials. It shows a significant difference because it does not include the fixed assets. So you can see the big difference between 119 million and the assets of almost 9 million, the liabilities of not even a million versus 16. And then the fund balance, it's kind of the same thing. The net position is just called something differently on the government-wide. On the general fund, they call it a fund balance. And you can see on this one, where your fund balance is close to 8 million, your unassigned fund balance, this is kind of your, that's the number you want to focus in on. That's why I put it in green for you guys. It's a little over $4 million, okay? And I like to think that that's a very healthy number if you were to compare that 4 million to, say, a year's worth of expenses. And I think if you had a, you're going out for bond, they would also agree with me on Your general fund has been going up gradually. You can see on the far right corner, that 4,032, which is the unassigned portion. The committed number, it's committed because the council has committed it. It can be uncommitted, but apparently that's the number that you have committed. The assigned probably has more to do with budgetary or special revenues. So you've got, you've got an increasing number on your general fund area of the fund balance. So that's kind of an interesting chart, I think. This is an attempt by me to take your government-wide and make it way too simple. You can see your general revenues at a comparative basis, 7.2 million. Your program revenue is about 9.4. Total revenue is around 16.6. Your expenses are a little bit more, and so there's a change in your net position of 623,000, almost 624,000. That's a change in your net position to the negative. And you can see it filters down to almost an ending net position of a little, little more than $99 million. Then your general fund, which is your current economic, you know, what you want to be looking at so far as what's happening currently and what you should be concerned about currently, especially when you do your budgets, is you've got revenues of about 7.4, expenditures of about 7.7, and you're just slightly off before we go into your transfers, which were significant this year. You were off about 300,000. Not every year in government, you need to actually add your fund balance, but you are doing actually a pretty healthy job of adding to your, your fund balance at the end here of almost 1 point, well, little over 1.7 million added to your beginning balance of 6.2. You get your ending fund balance of 7.9 on this slide. Susie, did you want to comment at all on the...
I would love to. Thank you, John. I just, I wanted to note that the 21 over 22, the revenues, so the reason that we're down is because we, is the majority of that is because we reduced the cannabis excise tax. So we expected that. We knew that was going to happen, and it happened. So that's, that's the majority of that. I also wanted to note that the transfers in and out, although it looks like we have this huge change in our fund balance, and we do mathematically, the majority of that 1,035,000 is from the ARPA funds, their one-time funds that we have put into the general fund, setting them aside, knowing that they are likely going to be used for water, wastewater, and broadband. So I just wanted to point that out, that it's overinflated because we moved those funds into the general fund, and that's how we chose to accept the funds. The other thing I wanted to point out really quickly is that the fund balance, it shows that our ending fund balance is 7.9 million. Almost half of that is reserved for, it's committed or assigned, which means it's in there for our, it's our reserve level, our emergency level that we have. We have a policy that states we'll put so much in there, and that's what that is. And then the assigned is the amounts that we put in according to our policy each year for vehicle equipment replacement, vehicles for the PD. We have multiple layers of things that we go through, and we set aside this money so that the money is there in the future. One more thing I wanted to point out is that our unfunded liability, as John had mentioned, is almost 10 million. Six, I believe, almost 7 million of that is our, is from our retirement or PERS. So I just wanted to point those things out. And although some of the things that show a negative, it's because like if you added your mortgage and instead of putting your mortgage amount, you took your whole mortgage and put it on a piece of paper, of course, you're going to have negative cash, right? And that's what some of these balance sheets are doing.
Great. Great. Well, I will actually, let's see if I can do this, share that screen. Susie just mentioned in the financial statements, the, these two numbers, the net pension liability of 6.7 and the OPEB of six or 2.7. So if you add those together, very, it's a, it's a big number. It's come close to $10 million. So that, that kind of does take away from, you know, this, this number down here. If those numbers were not there, you'd probably have a $7 million plus number. But you know, you are dealing, and this is why it's tough, because there's two balance sheets and two income statements, and one is full accrual accounting, and one is what you need to worry about now. And we've, we've kind of done that in this little chat, right? We've tried to at least clarify the difference between the government-wide, the first one in the front, full accrual accounting, and the one that's the fund basis one that's a little further in. I think that's it. City Manager David Kelly, are there questions? You probably can see, people, I can't.
Well, let's run through it right now. Let's see, who has questions first? Councilmember Bagby, you want to go? Councilmember Wheeler?
Vice Mayor? It's not necessarily a, thank you. It's not necessarily a question, just a comment, that the auditor's opinion is very impressive. And Susie, I just want to say congratulations. That's an excellent audit. And your staff, and as a matter of fact, all city employees for getting the information to you has done a great job, but thank you for your leadership. That was it.
You, Susie. The first one is just because I don't know what this answer is. What is our reserve percentage that we have for the city approximate that we keep? Do you have, I mean, we have a reserve that we're supposed to meet.
Yeah, we are supposed to meet a level of 25 or 27%. I'm sorry. It just...
Like three months' worth of time, basically?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, perfect. And the ARPA funds that are in there, are they, I know they're accounted or assigned or whatever, but do we have a timeframe that we have to have them spent?
Yeah, by the end of 2024.
Perfect. And then the last question I had, and I told you I was going to bring this up, is the cannabis tax.
Yes.
It was a big hit for our planned and our budget, and we spent more than we brought in. Is this something that, from your perspective, we should be revisiting the percentages that we've set them at?
From my perspective, I do believe that we should be looking at it again, either trying to increase it back to where it was or coming up with some happy medium between the annual permit fee and the cannabis tax maybe, yeah. It's getting confusing, I think, for everyone, and I think if we could create just one or the other, then...
Perfect. Okay. Well, if there's no other questions or comments, go ahead.
I just want to thank the auditor and Susie. This is backbreaking work, and it's nice to have it done, but it underscores the fact that this just tells us our books are in good shape, not necessarily our finances. And I guess just for a future agenda item, I will be moving forward to some budget workshops, and you know, it's definitely would be an appropriate time to revisit the cannabis excise issue. But I also, you know, I've heard from members of the industry who had wanted to get a quarterly meeting started so that they can stay in open communication with Susie and staff. And I think that as part of the budget process, that might want to be something that we can pursue as well because I know that some of, some of the industry folks have been on calls with the state and have said, well, gee, is your city charging this? Is your city doing this? And they don't know. And they're like, so it's a, you know, there are other revenue sources that we could be, or things that we could possibly, tools we could possibly use to make up some of those, some of that gap. So I think that that should be something that's part of the budget and the planning for the coming year, for the coming two years now.
Yes.
Good information. Thank you. Thank you, Susie, and thank you, John, for all your hard work on this.
Thank you, Mayor.
To the public for any questions, real quick. Anyone online have any questions, raise your hand.
Thank you. Raising their hands at this time online, and there's no one present in the council chamber.
Thank you. So we'll bring it back to the dais, and anything else from anyone? Seeing none? Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Okay. I would just like to, Mayor, if it's okay and appropriate, would just like to say it's been a pleasure working with Susie and her steady hand or her staff, you know, Shannon. It's not always the case, so auditors tend to be a little bit, you know, we don't get to say a lot of nice things. We only do get to say mean things when things go bad. So in terms of working with the city and getting a clean audit opinion and working with the entire finance committee, just like to say thank you on behalf of our firm, Cropper Accountancy.
Yes, sir.
Nothing further, I will drop off. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the 21-22 audited financial statements, to accept them. It could be just a simple motion.
Okay. All right. Anyone want to make that motion?
Motion to accept the financial statements as is.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second from Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Wheeler. We have one more shot for the public. Any comments? Seeing none? Bring it back, go for the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead and start with the motioner. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passes 5-0, and thank you, Alex, for recognizing that. Sorry I missed it.
Moving forward to G2, Resolution Revising the Current Stage 3 Water Shortage Emergency, Mandating Water Conservation Measures to a Stage 1 Water Shortage Emergency, Requiring Voluntary Water Conservation, and Terminating the Previously Enacted Water Shortage Surcharge Enacted Pursuant to Cloverdale Municipal Code Section 13.05.070. David?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Really delighted to...
Really delighted to bring this forward because it's a reflection of where we stand today given the precipitation conditions we've experienced in the last four, four to five months. We were coming off what I would really, and I think most scientists and experts agree, is a historic drought. We went into a drought really after the storms we received in February of twenty nineteen. So after nearly four years of drought, it, it, it's, it's great to be able to bring this forward for the council's consideration. With that said, I do want to acknowledge first the, the work that the council has taken over the last four years to address the, the significant drought conditions. Some of the actions you, you took as a council was, of course, to take immediate action to declare a, a stage two drought emergency back in twenty twenty-one when it was recognized. We were, we were really starting to go into some dry conditions. We had no idea at that time that the drought would continue for another three years. Subsequent to that, the council entered into an agreement with the Sonoma Marin Water Savings Partnership that was intended to, you know, help provide information to our community, water-saving tips, water-saving kits, as well as leak reporting. Our, it was really helpful for our staff to participate in those discussions in a collaborative way to address regionally how we are responding to the drought. In addition, council took action to adopt the Urban Water Management Plan that contained a water shortage contingency plan and made a number of amendments to your municipal code by adopting an urgency ordinance that set a, a, a specific water shortage stages. We, we, we transformed our code from, from four stages to, to six and kind of set new levels. And during this drought, it helped us respond by setting specific conservation levels. And that, and that's really where our community comes in. Our community did a overwhelmingly fantastic job of implementing conservation measures and reducing their water use, and it really helped us weather this, this dry period. And so a lot of accolades to all the members of our community, our residents, our businesses, who took action to reduce, reduce their water usage. We, we saw, you know, on the heels of the continued drought, the state step in, issued a curtailment order, which put in place additional reporting requirements, and, and staff had to step up and respond accordingly and do a lot of work. Our water staff was there and still continues today doing a lot of readings to make sure that we're, we're checking our water use, both from the wells all the way through the system. And, and, and that's required our staff to adjust, a lot of work on, on their behalf to address the state's requirements. Ultimately, because the drought persisted, Governor Newsom issued an executive order adopting emergency regulations that, you know, put additional requirements for water suppliers, including the city, in place. Luckily, starting back in December of twenty twenty-two, or really November of twenty twenty-two, we started to see a series of atmospheric rivers that generated a significant amount of precipitation. All that kind of culminated on March of this year. Governor Newsom issuing an executive order N dash five dash twenty-three that basically terminated the emergent, the original emergency proclamation and suspended the drought conditions. Given, given that, the item we were bringing forward tonight is to reduce our water shortage emergency from a stage three, which was targeting a twenty-five percent conservation standard by our customers, to a stage one. We also want to acknowledge that as part of this, we, we understand that, that, the, there's a water shortage surcharge that was implemented as part of the water shortage emergency, and that was, that was a critical component of the, the actions that were taken by council to preserve the financial viability of our water enterprise. And that was a, a real significant contributor of revenue, given the significant conservation efforts that were made by, by our community to just ensure that we, we continue to be viable financially and be able to fund our, you know, important capital improvements. So the action tonight really reflects that our, our reservoirs have improved tremendously. We're really kind of brimming at that hundred percent level of our, our reservoirs. Lake, Lake Sonoma's, you know, over a hundred percent. While it doesn't serve directly Cloverdale, it's, it's an important local water source for Sonoma County. But Lake Minassino is also at, at, you know, near a hundred percent level in, in, in its brimming. So we, we think it's appropriate for council to consider a reduction in the water shortage emergency from the current stage three to a stage one. And, and corresponding to that, termination of the water shortage surcharge, the resolution in your packet reflects that the surcharge would be terminated effective with the, the March billing, which we're currently, will, will be, we, we, we always bill in the rear. So that means that the city bills in April for March usage. The, with, with council's support and adoption of the resolution tonight, it would terminate that surcharge for the month of March. You might ask why we are requesting a reduction from stage three to stage one and not maybe eliminating it entirely. Well, we, we do see some potential concerns out there. The Potter Valley Project is kind of in flux with some modifications that are being made to Scott's Dam by PG&E that, you know, potentially could have downstream impacts on future filling of, of Lake Minassino. And likewise, you know, and as outlined, you'll see in the general report, you know, stage one doesn't, doesn't put in place, you know, significant mandatory reduction, reduction measures. They're really, they're very encouraged and voluntary, but we, we think they are good practices. And we, we do believe our customers will continue to, to do things to address water leaks, you know, using turn-off devices for, you know, when they wash their car, really limiting washing of vehicles and pave surfaces using water, and just more disciplined irrigation practices, which will, will continue to, you know, provide information in our newsletter that supports, you know, just what are kind of considered best practices for, for water conservation to our community. Because we, we do believe or expect that while we're, we're experiencing really great water conditions now, it's just a matter of time before we might be experiencing drought in the future. But we do think the action that's recommended tonight to adopt the resolution, modifying the water shortage emergency from a stage three to stage one is very appropriate. So that really concludes staff's agenda report. Again, want to acknowledge the, the leadership of council and all the work you've done to a, a, address the, the regulatory impacts of the, the, the water shortage, the work that, that our community has done. I know they've, they've really done a great job at, at reducing water uses and conserving. And then likewise, the work our staff has done to try to address all of the requirements that have come, come from the state and adapting to the, the, you know, these four years of drought. So that concludes my staff report. Mayor, happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, David, very well said. I'll start up here. Anyone have any comments, questions? Seeing none? Any members of the public? I see no hands. We'll bring it back. You answered everything I was going to comment or question, so it's perfect, David. If anyone wants to move, excuse me, move the resolution?
I'm happy to move the resolution.
Go ahead.
City of Cloverdale, City Council, a resolution of City Council. I might regret this, but I'll try to get through it.
Would you like someone else to do it?
Let me give it a try. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, amending the current stage three water shortage emergencies to stage one water shortage emergency requiring voluntary water conservation pursuant to chapter thirteen point zero five, Conservation of Water Supply of the Cloverdale Municipal Code, and terminating the previously enacted water shortage surcharge pursuant to Cloverdale, section thirteen dot zero five dot zero seven zero.
Beautiful. Do you have a second?
I second it.
Perfect. Roll call when you're ready.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passes five zero, and once again, thanks to the community for all the hard work you did for the conservation. Okay, subcommittee reports. First one is Finance, Admin, and Police. You want me to comment here? Okay, I will, absolutely. We had a good meeting last week, I believe it was, and we discussed a lot of the items that Finance Director Susie talked about regarding the cannabis tax and many other items. Make sure there wasn't, we also discussed the flavored tobacco ban that will be coming forward pretty soon. And those are the only major items that we had on that calendar. Our next meeting is scheduled for May first. Planning and Sustainability?
Our next meeting is April eighteenth.
Public Works?
Mr. Mayor, we will be meeting on the twenty-fifth of this month. We had an excellent meeting a couple of weeks ago. And I suggest council members maybe look at that YouTube excellent report on our conditions and our striking conditions. It was a very good meeting, lots of information. Thank you.
Thank you. Joint City and School?
April seventeen.
Good. The Homeless Community Advisory Group?
Next meeting is June twelfth.
Aye. Councilmember Reports, anything other than what has been given? Councilmember Bagby?
It's been in my, in writing. I'm supposed to be in Sacramento. I'm going to give it another try tomorrow, and if not, I'll just get there on Friday for the, the board meeting. But yeah, actually, I'll, there was a, a great press conference that I missed in Sacramento on housing and homelessness, and I'll make sure that, to share that. And maybe that's something that we can share on the city Facebook page. They did an excellent job of getting council members from all over the state, from different sized cities, really, you know, talking about their, their commitment. Or that, you know, that, that the cities are at ground zero, regardless if you're part of continuum care or not, if you're a large city or a small city, we're at ground zero, and we need to work with our county and our state partners to address housing and, and homelessness. And the league is taking the lead on that as usual. So I'll just, I'll be sure to share that video of the press conference with everybody so they get a chance to see it.
Thank you very much. Any informational reports? All right, we have a letter of support for the federal transit grant.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Included in the agenda packet is a, a letter of support signed by Mayor Lance, addressed to Margaret Veltieri, the program manager for the Federal Transit Authority. This is in regards to a grant application submitted by Sonoma County Transit for a grant totaling twenty-four million to purchase twenty-one forty-foot electric battery, or battery electric buses and charging equipment. So I just wanted to note that the letter of support for the Transit, Sonoma County Transit grant application is included for your reference.
Thank you. City Manager Report?
No, no reports, Mayor.
City Attorney Report? Nothing, great, thank you. Okay, Current Impacts to Water Supply?
Mayor, I think, you know, kind of covered that in, in the previous report. And with council approval, unless you think otherwise, we, we can, council may want to remove this from, from, from the agenda or otherwise.
Remove the next two, COVID-nineteen as well, because that is no longer. Perfect. Council Directional Future Agenda Items?
I have something. I was hoping at our next meeting, we could have a short discussion of the pros and cons of smart water meters, and that way the public could have a little input if they want.
Okay, can you be a little bit more specific?
Well, I, I personally have some concerns about, you know, we have the electric meters that are smart. Now we're going to have the water meters that are smart. I personally don't think they're necessarily as safe as people in the industry claim they are. And so I, I just think if, you know, some people like them, some people don't. Maybe if we could have a small discussion, then if anyone from the public wants to make comments, that they could, and maybe we could, you know, decide something like if people want to opt out, they don't have to pay extra.
Okay, maybe you and I can meet and figure out how we can give that one here? Thank you.
Wouldn't that go to the subcommittee?
And that's, and that's what we'll figure out is where it should be placed, I think. If that's okay with you, Vice Mayor, I mean, or?
That's fine.
Anything else from anyone? Seeing none, that's awesome. Meeting adjourned at seven twelve. Thank you, everyone.